Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, January 28th at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have thirteen in attendance. Alderman Dowd and Alderman Jettie are both under the weather and will not be joining us this evening. Also in attendance, Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Fulton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, of course, we all know that we have the big event coming up on February 11th, that being the New Hampshire primary. This will be our city clerk's first experience with the New Hampshire primary, so she's working very hard on it. It's got a lot of people involved, but we do need more poll workers, especially in Words 1 and 4. So if you know of anyone who's interested, that would be, please talk to Sue because we really need some more people in the polls. And tomorrow is the last day to register prior to Election Day for anybody who wants to vote and is not registered. We like it if they register at the city clerk's office, even though they can show up on Voting Day, just because the more people that show up on Voting Day, the longer the lines are and all that kind of thing. So we'd like to get as many people registered as we possibly can in advance. It's good that we have same-day registration, but still, we want to try to make sure it's organized and we can handle the volume. Number two, Madam President, I was going to mention that I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting this past week down in Washington, DC. This is an annual event, the Midwinter Meeting, they call it. About 150 mayors or so gathered. We talked about various issues that are of concern to Nashua, gun violence. There are nine members there who have gone through a mass shooting incident, Pittsburgh, Dayton, many other places. And so that is a matter of great concern to the nation's mayors. Their message is, it can happen anywhere, and we pray that, of course, it never happens again anywhere, but it's something that we always need to be on the lookout for and make sure that we're prepared. Number two, the climate change is, of course, a big issue across the cities. The nation has withdrawn from the Paris Accords. A lot of cities, including Nashua, are stepping up to meet that challenge. Climate change, as was pointed out by the pollster Zogby, as well as what we all know from talking with our own residents, that among our younger residents, the millennials and the Gen Z'ers, climate change is like the number-one issue. Young people asking the question, will the world still be here when I get to be a certain age, or will it be changed? And another issue, of course, that many cities are encountering is affordable housing. We, of course, see that right here. I was just getting an update recently on the vacancy rate in Nashua, which for kind of a middle-level apartment, two bedrooms at sort of the middle of the market rent, the vacancy rate is 0.3%. So obviously, we need housing of all types, affordable, not affordable, market rate. We need everything, a variety of new things, to try to meet the demand. We need to do everything we can to try to expand that vacancy rate, because if a healthy vacancy rate is more like 4% or 5%, which gives the tenant more of a bargaining, a little bit more bargaining power, and makes it easier for people to find apartments, yet even at 95%, the landlord's still doing pretty well. So obviously, that's a concern for us and is a concern for many of the cities across the United States. Next, Madam President, I wanted to mention briefly that we had two great Martin Luther King celebrations this past week, one at the Baptist Church, one staged by OBU at Alpine Grove in Hudson. We had wonderful speakers. We in Nashua have been celebrating both at the church, at OBU, for close to 40 years, and so that is a ceremony that is very worthwhile and the community should be very proud of. And I was glad to participate in both. Finally, Madam Chair, I wanted to just mention that on the appointments list, we have some reappointments, but I wanted to just point out a new appointment. Helen Honero, who is a well-known community resident and has previously been on the State School Board, has agreed to serve on the Housing Commission, and I think that is a good place for her, and so she will be coming to the Personnel Committee, and I know she'll be a great addition to the -- and I've been trying to talk her into this for like six months, but she does want to do it. There's no question she wants to do it, and so I'm glad to be able to present that appointment to you tonight. And beyond that, Madam Chair, I'm concluded.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Start over here. I'd just like to say thank you for finding Helen and getting her on there. I think Helen will be awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of January 14th, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Daniel Donovan, Chief Operating Officer, Nashville School District, regarding request to transfer $65,000 from school contingency into the school operating budget.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Daniel Donovan, Chief Operating Officer, Nashville School District, regarding request to transfer $1 million approved by Resolution R19-185 from school contingency into the school operating budget.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract for scheduled purchase replacement of ladder truck.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to allegiance, fire, and rescue in the amount of $1,311,817 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have thirteen yays, zero nays. And that motion carries. Petitions?
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority, I have this day appointed James Tollner, 1 Sequoia Circle, Nashua, for a term to expire October 14th, 2021; Eric Wilson, 60 Indian Rock Road, Nashua, for a term to expire October 14th, 2022; and Helen Honero, 46 Raymond Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 14th, 2024, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 9th, 2020 Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 13th, 2020 Human Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 15th, 2020 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 16th, 2020 Special Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 21st, 2020 Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 22nd, 2020 Committee on Infrastructure, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 27th, 2020 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a Budget Review Committee meeting held last night regarding proposed Resolution 20-008. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Last evening, we had a public hearing on Resolution 20008, and then subsequently, the Budget Review Committee took up the legislation and gave it a favorable recommendation forward. The legislation is on the docket tonight. It's Resolution 20008, and it is authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,400,000 to purchase a new 2020 Pierce-Aro XT red aerial ladder truck for the fire department. The reason that this is coming in so quickly is because the fire department is under a contract to get the specs into the manufacturer by January 31st. Otherwise, this cost would go up by $40,000. So we don't have to, but the committee is recommending that we pass this this evening, and that was the gist of the meeting last night.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Sorry. Pardon me. Second reading of Resolution 20008, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,400,000 to purchase a new 2020 Pierce-Aro XT red aerial ladder truck for the fire department.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move for final passage of our 2008 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 2008 by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Alderwoman Cleve.
Thank you. I attended the meeting last evening on this, and I think a lot of good questions were asked as to, do we do things like leasing and so on? And I think anybody that wants any of that specific information, it's best to kind of review those minutes or the video of the meeting, but I think it's been well-vetted. I think it's extremely important that we get this through by the 31st of January, and as we've often said, every dollar saved is a dollar saved. So I strongly recommend passage of this.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have thirteen yays and zero nays. And that motion carries.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading, Resolution 20010, relative to the transfer of $65,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70112, contingency for educational priorities.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading, Resolution R20011, relative to the transfer of $1 million from Department 194 contingency account 70112, contingency for educational priorities.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R2012, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,100,000 for the Public Health and Community Services Division building renovations.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Laws, Alderman Gathright. Given its first reading, I will assign this to the Budget Review Committee, Committee on Infrastructure, and the Board of Health. Alderman Lopez.
Do you want to make a motion that we have a public hearing on Monday, February 24th by roll call?
Yes, sorry.
This is my one moment.
Motion by Alderman Lopez to accept the first reading of our 2012 by roll call, assign it to Budget Review Committee on Infrastructure and Board of Health, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, February 24th, 2020 by roll call. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. On the motion that is read, I have in the calendar on Monday, the 24th, is a budget hearing, and I am clerk of budget, and if that is the actual date that when we anticipate a budget hearing, this would be in conflict with the infrastructure meeting. Can that be checked by the automatic liaison on the calendar?
You are correct. Budget is meeting on the 24th. Infrastructure is meeting on the 26th.
Would it go through the chair? Would it be appropriate to perhaps maybe change the motion to the 26th on the calendar with a regular scheduled infrastructure meeting?
Okay.
I have no problem with that motion either.
No problem with that motion? Okay. So then, the public hearing will be scheduled for Wednesday, February 26th.
Thank you.
So any further discussion on that? If the clerk would please call the roll. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd. Excuse me. Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have thirteen yays and zero nays. And that motion carries.
First reading of Resolution R2013, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $24,972.80 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity, Project Safe Neighborhood.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R2014, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $35,196 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program in authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Karen, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver, and Alderman Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance 2003, authorizing stop signs on Beacon, Beard, Highland, and Locust Streets at their intersection with Auburn Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance 2004, allowing permitted overnight on-street parking on 8th Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleve, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Gathright. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. You have one person signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just wanted to share a couple comments with you. We saw the report had come out in the paper regarding the police investigation getting released, and part of that investigation had to do with this change that was made on property record cards that amounted to a $24 million reduction on a group of cards. And that raised a number of issues because of how documentation was handled on those cards. The difficulty was the administration. Ms. Kleiner wasn't forthright on why those changes were made, which is what pushed it out into an outside investigation. But my concern is this: That change was done because we changed table data in the AssessPro system. Table data is what changes a group of properties that are coded as a group in that table. So essentially, what you're doing is a mini reassessment on a group of properties, and that's allowed outside of a big update year, like KRT appraisal coming in. We're allowed to do these mini reassessments. However, I am very concerned that these mini reassessments are being done outside of the knowledge of the Board of Assessors. They don't approve these changes, which is actually shocking to me, because they're the oversight board for approving changes in large-scale assessments, and the other area is in abatements, when abatements come forward. So, you know, when we do a KRT or an update, we get all this data that pours out to the public. The public understands what went on, and we can access a lot of information. When a property owner files an abatement, it's a very public document. Every property owner or every resident of this city can go down to assessing, pull the abatement file, see who filed, see what sales comps they used, or what data corrections they wanted, see what appraisal was put in. They can follow the whole process, the assessor who did the analysis, the analysis done by the assessor, and then the action of the Board of Assessors on that property. So we have this huge public trail that's available that explains to us how a new assessment was arrived at, or perhaps it was denied and it stayed the same. When assessors in the office make a table data change, and they change a large group of properties, and there's no documentation done, as was the case with this property, that becomes a major concern to me, and that was what raised the red flag. So, you know, I would love to see a policy change in our Board of Assessors where they are receiving this information when table data is changed in the model, and it comes down to the Board so that they are reviewing the group of properties that are receiving this reduction. In this case, it was a $24 million reduction. I think that's worthy of going to the Board. Just in the last few weeks, I stumbled on some properties by my house, because as all of you know, I'm in an abatement issue, and there was a change made to a group of properties. Each property was cut $100,000. One of them has already been abated. By July 1st, it was abated. In October, an assessor down there cut it another hundred grand. I happened to catch it just by luck, wrote my questions, said, "How did this happen? I'm in the same situation I was 16 months ago. I don't know. There's no documentation. I have to do research." Now, the new director had said to us months ago, "Everything's going to be documented. We're going to document from now on." There's really no document trail. Also, there should be some policy in place whereby data changes being made to cards, data changes that are significant, that are going to move a property 25%, 100 grand, should be going before the Board. We're not talking about a three-quarter bath is really a half and the assessment changed $2,000. We're talking about a $400,000 home coming down to $300,000. That's a massive adjustment, and there should be a paper trail that's clear as can be to describe what went on with those properties, and there isn't. And I'm frustrated that I'm back in the situation I was 16 months ago with an assessor who keeps saying, "I don't know. I'll have to do research. I'll get back to you." It was the same assessor that treated my property that way, and I never got answers. And I know I'm never going to get answers again on this one. The DRA asked me to put in a PA 71. I've just completed it. I'm filing it up there, because I'm frustrated, and I really think we need to get some policies in place with our Board of Assessors where they are doing more oversight than what I see going on down there. We have some gaps in our assessing office right now, and I am absolutely not in agreement with some of the assessors down there and the skill level they're showing for the work they do. Very concerned, and when I stumble on this and I see this again, my concerns remain heightened. So I hope that some of you will join me in encouraging the Board of Assessors to get on board with some policy to create better oversights for all of us. It upsets me when I hear the mayor talking about the budget issues and the pending tax implications for what we have going on, because I feel that this administration doesn't give a darn about the equity of these assessments, and we have some assessors in there that are slashing numbers, that make absolutely no sense, and we let that happen, and we burden those that are overtaxed with carrying the burden, and then we complain that the tax rate's going to go up. You know, I've all not been an advocate of opening your door for this listed measure, and it's for reasons like this. I will not tell anyone they should open their door for a listed measure. The only people who should open their door are people who have blighted properties or who haven't done upgrades in 25 years. If you don't have that property situation, keep your door closed and force the assessment from the street, because it's the only way there's going to be equity. Because with a small pool that opened their door, the 15%, I was the person who opened my door, and I got royally screwed, and I'm trying to get out of it now. I could not possibly tell anyone else in this city to open your door and do what I did. Close your door, let them work from the street for all of us. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here. Alderman Cleve.
It's a sensitive issue, but when I read the article in the paper, in The Telegraph, on Sunday, I was pleased to hear that our assessing department was basically told there was no -- the accusations that had been made were unfounded, and I was glad to hear that. I'm sorry that there are people that disagree, but I can tell you, I've been getting phone calls, people that were happy that the city has been vindicated. Yes, people aren't happy that, from what the mayor has spoken, about possible taxes going up and so on, but I think people are willing to listen and to make sure that we're held accountable and that we do what we have to do. I disagree with not opening up your door. I think if everybody opened up the door, then there would be some real equity. So I would like to counteract that comment of, "Don't open your door," and I would strongly suggest people open their door, and let's make this as transparent as the people in the city want it to be. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just wanted to -- I believe this will be the last full board meeting before the upcoming primary, and I want to remind people to go out and do your civic duty and vote. As the mayor mentioned earlier in the meeting, you can register to vote at City Hall up until tomorrow, and then after, you can register at the polls on Election Day. Just bring your ID, and, you know, hopefully see everybody there, and hopefully have a great turnout, as always.
Alderman Lopez.
Tonight at midnight starts the city's annual point-in-time count. This is the annual time during the year that we count people who are homeless, either sheltered, unsheltered, or at risk. So anybody who is homeless, please contact a provider tomorrow of all days, whether it's a soup kitchen or city welfare. You can also call
You can also call 1-844-800-9911 for our coordinated access line, or the much easier to remember,
Alderman Tenza.
So a number of us had a chance to attend a breakfast earlier this week put on by Director Bagley and Public Health Department, along with the -- in conjunction, I should say, with the mayor's opioid task force. The topic of the discussion was adverse childhood experiences and how we, as a community, could help children who are experiencing certain traumas develop appropriately and develop in a way so that they're not at risk for certain other risk factors as they get older. So it was a great informative breakfast. I can't help but think that the presentation we had earlier tonight about PAL is a perfect example of the types of things we could be doing here. I thank Building on Hope for what they're going to do for that neighborhood because that is going to be remarkable. One of the topics that came up repeatedly, I think, was just surrounding loneliness of children, teenagers, and how they need spaces to get away from their screens and come together. So PAL, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., all those places are really important parts of our city, especially for our young people.
Anyone else on this side? Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that Alderman Tenza brought up quite a few very important issues. One that he didn't touch on was the peoples that they're bringing in for the 10 days in May. People want to help. People are only looking for someone to start something, to join, to be part of something stupendous. I think this is going to be wonderful for this city, wonderful for our feeling about the way our city cares for us, and it's wonderful, just wonderful. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so as you all know, the chamber is going to be going through some renovations. So this is our last meeting. Donna, this is our last meeting this week?
Yes.
And our last meeting in this chamber until probably the last week in March, first week in April. So what I would suggest you do this evening is clean out your desk because next time you come here, your desk won't be here. These desks will be gone. I did bring some bags. There are some bags in the office. If you need to carry your stuff home with you, or -- but tonight is it. It's the last night. We're going to be sitting at these desks and hoping the transition is smooth for the renovations. So Donna has worked really hard to find alternate meeting spaces for us, so make sure when you get your log for the week that you check the location because some of them are going to be in 208, some of them are going to be at Nashville North. I think one we have at the Police Department in their classroom. So just make sure you check your log for the location of your meetings. And that's it. Alderman Lopez?
Will the new places have room for us to bring, like, a small water bottle?
A small water bottle, Alderman Lopez.
Just asking.
What about the codebooks? Do you want us to take those?
I think Donna can store those in the back, but the stuff that you have in your desks, if you would please take it out because, you know, we don't want her taking all your stuff out and having to deal with it. So if you could please take that tonight, that would be very much appreciated. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, we're going to have later, very shortly, and we haven't had a time certain because I am in communication with my fellow chair of PEDC, of the Infrastructure and PEDC Committees. We do have something coming up. Right now, as you know, with what the president said, we're in transition. We're looking for a date certain when we can get meeting rooms and everything else like that. So I ask members of both committees, please be flexible with us. We'll try to, you know, give you a heads up long enough to let you know. But there's something that's coming up that is time-sensitive, so if you could be attentive to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Personnel will be meeting next Monday, February 3 at 7:00, and we will be in Room 208.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. On that note about personnel, I know many of us here and also in the public are interested in the last call legislation. My intention is to table it at that committee meeting because there are some other things that are being worked on in addition to just that legislation. So my hope is, is that we can bring it up at the March Personnel Meeting. So just so anybody that, if you were going to plan on coming for that particular reason, my intention is to table that, and usually that would happen. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Okay, seeing none? You have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:10 PM. Thank you, everyone. The end.